Called order. Eleven. Here we go. All right, work session.
All right. Good evening, mayor members of council. This is our goal-setting session that we have for 2025. As I noted in my email a couple of weeks ago, we have not had a goal-setting session in two years. So staff needs goals and directives in order to fulfill the needs of the council. And so that's what's here for you tonight. We'll go through a few of the examples that I put together for you for what I'm trying to incorporate into a document, to have a good moving forward document, and then hopefully something we can stick together and then make an easy adjustments moving forward. And I'll get into that in a minute. So again, a successful goal-setting will look like a successful goal-setting will have a conversation amongst the council members and derive a product that looks very similar to the documents that you have in front of yourself. There are three different examples of those documents within that 11 by 17 sheet that I gave you. And they will look similar to the right. Again, the color doesn't matter. I'm not too worried about most of the colors and stuff. But it's a strategic plan of how a larger, more broad initiative can be accomplished and measured through smaller projects. If you need more pens, let me know.
No, they just.
They're literally brand new, so.
Oh, they got wax on them?
They might have waxed it, but they're brand new, so. I did ask for goals to be sent to me from council. I tried to do my best to put them on one screen so we could kind of go through them. I will bring this screen back up when we want to get to a document like the one in front of you tonight. And I can read them. I didn't think I'd have to read individual ones of them. I did hear multiple times a couple of things. So a couple of them that I did hear more than once is the historic village water plan or some sort of plan for the historic village water. That was something that came up a couple of times. Fire department call volume change that came up twice related to calls. What else came up? There's a lot of individual thoughts, which were really good and lots of individual things that I think we can incorporate into some of these overall strategic plan documents. Fire department strategic plan, getting the road plan figured out. The three district, supporting the growth of existing local and regional businesses and developing more new, development of new, more local businesses. Fix the 40 to one issue. Taxes. These are some of the goals that I received from council. My big question to the council is, is what are we trying to accomplish with these goals? And so what I got back from goals to me, these are initiatives or what I would call right-hand side action items of things that we need to get done to make a left-hand initiative or priority or goal completed. And my question is, is what are we trying to accomplish with those goals that we got is, you guys are giving me action items and I appreciate all of the responses and the information. However, my thoughts and processes is trying to get us over to the left-hand side of give me those big overarching things, and you can use these ones as some examples of communities around us that we're not specifically ours. Ours is the third one in that document that we had in 2021 is, give me some larger things you're looking to do as in bigger priority object initiatives, and we can provide those action items similar to what you guys are writing here tonight to get us to a goal of where we're at in the future. Another way to think of this, if you're looking at these items above and go, what do these items mean? Or different than what you see in the other examples are strategic initiative or strategic priority is someone that's going to take 25-plus years to get there. You're going to have a goal. It's going to be a 10-year goal, roughly, 10- or 15-year goal. The key in the outcome indicators are how we are measuring those. The target is how do we know we cross the finish line once we get there? And those action items are year or two-year goals of what we want to accomplish in the next year or two. Kind of another way to look at this document. This document is used by multiple communities. This is something that, there must be some company that did it for a bunch of other communities and I basically just copied and pasted, so. Copy and hide or whatever. And so that's why I'm looking to try to have this redone for Dayton now and then in the future because these strategic initiatives shouldn't really change most of the time because they're 25-plus year goals and they should really be based on our mission statement or what we see as the future of Dayton. The goals might change every once in a while, but the action items on the far right will change almost yearly. And that's kind of what I'm looking to make it easier to update is that we're not trying to recreate the wheel every year. And I provided some examples from other communities that were around.
What did you say about page three?
Oh, page, there's, it should be a third page and it should be totally just like this. That was our, that was ours personally in Dayton in 2021, and that was the first year that I got here. We took a document that was extremely long and hard to understand and had this, I called it the short summary version that I put together and helped the council put together in 2021. And it seemed to work pretty well overall. And again, if that document is where you guys want to start at and you want to adjust, great. I'm happy to do that. If you guys want to say, absolutely not, we hate that one, but we love something in a different community. These are communities of current. So one of them is Wayzetta and one of them is Champlin. So it's not trying to say that they're from outstate Minnesota and also not to say that they're, you know, bigger or smaller than us. Wayzetta is about the same size as us and Champlin, they're next door, so. And I'm happy to adjust and amend. This is your kind of time to talk as a council of what you guys want to see. And my goal is to try to make it so that we can have these higher-end initiatives and then update these action items in the future moving forward and identify some of those individual, what I'm going to call you guys said, goals. Some of those goals can be then put in as action items of things that can be accomplished. I don't have a lot more than that. I'm happy to provide any more information you guys are looking for. I'm here to answer questions and take down notes. The floor is back to you guys and there's plenty of note paper in front of you. If you need help, I'm going to try to do my best to try to help with creating initiatives with the goals you guys are looking for. Again, we can go back to that document and scratch and amend and adjust it.
So one of my big questions, so strategic initiatives, oh, okay. I've gone through this process at my work a couple of times. Usually we do it every five years when we stop and look at our strategic plan, recognizing, because things change so much. So I think there's this, a little bit of a disconnect of here's this 25-year-plus plan, but we want to tweak it every two years. So I think, one of the things I think we need to maybe just agree to is, we make a plan and like we revisit it like every five years. Like, we can't constantly be tweaking the big long-term vision 25 years out. Like, that isn't practical for you guys because you're heading, like, as you said, some of these things takes years to do and we can't like pull the rug out from under you two years into this long thing and be like, haha, we just, we're kidding, goes other direction.
But, but we do.
I know, and that's not okay.
Well, it is because that's what happens with the election.
Yeah, I mean, to a certain extent, but, but I think that, but so I guess in my mind then, I am fine with the current strategic initiatives because they're broad enough that like, you can come in and a whole new council, like if everyone, you know, if everyone gets re-elected one year and you have like, you know, had say all three of us been brand new, well, two of us are brand new. But like, had it been a completely different mayor who'd never been on council, right? And you have a brand-new council. It just, it seems, because I was the person on the other side of it, right? Like, I was the faculty member who had been at my school for years, put all the work in, and we got a whole administration and they basically told us to shove all our work where the sun doesn't shine and here's start over. And man, that created nothing but bitter anger. So like, I don't want to do that to you guys, right? So I personally really like the current strategic initiatives. Everything I want to do could easily tuck itself into one of those four. Like, when I think about what I want to see happen or where I would like to put our energy, they easily fit into these four. So I personally have no, no desire to change the actual strategic initiatives we have. Tweaking some of the goals, yeah, I have some tweaks I would like to see for the goals. But that's, that's where I'm at from looking at this. So I will open it up to what other people are feeling.
I would disagree with what you said. The problem is what, what, you know, somebody looks at, say this, this first one, build quality infrastructure. I would guarantee you that everybody that gets selected has a different outlook on that.
Yeah.
To me, if we're plotting along at this three-parager thing, that is not quality infrastructure. But I can guarantee you that somebody else will say that's exactly quality infrastructure. So I mean, that's, that's the conundrum you run into with some of this stuff. But I mean, I think, you know, what Zachy said was correct. I think what we ended up doing was, you know, these, these goals on this, in the second column were kind of our initiatives to some extent. And you just kind of lumped them in and there was a lot of fluff in there too.
Yeah, the initiatives are very broad, as you can see from the other communities that are there as well. I mean, there's some there, operational efficiencies and fiscally being fiscally. And those are, you know, again, very broad topics and I, I get that they can be very broad and I think that's kind of the goal of those. And I, we break it down into four sections. We can make three, we can make two, we can make five. I'm not so, you know, it doesn't have to be exactly this layout, but they were broad enough that you could fit a goal in there, whether you think build quality infrastructure is three houses an acre or you think quality infrastructure is make the historic village the best water system we ever seen. So I mean, that's kind of why it's, was generic enough. But the action items, I think, are something that you guys, you guys focus in on when the goals are given to me. You guys are focusing in on action items and those, those are great. And those are what we need as well, but we need to go to the left and think broad picture first before we get the individual items.
Yeah, I think a lot of these are broad enough that they sort of carry over. Where are we on them and what are, you know, what are the next steps for implementation? Some of the measures I think need to be revisited.
We could, yeah, we could revisit all. The document is blank. I don't have anything on the document right now because it's just today. I'm going to take any notes and help out as best as I possibly can.
And I think, well, to your point, Sarah, I, where I worked, we, we worked off of a five-year plan and we looked at it every year. And I think that was useful because this is in the medical world. Things change fast enough that your five-year plan by year three doesn't make any sense. And I think that's maybe, well, there are things happening in this city that we can't anticipate five years down the road. So I do think it needs to be looked at more than, you know, like, write it, put it to bed and see how we did it in five years. I don't think we can do that because too much, too much changes. Things that we don't anticipate happening are going to come up.
Which is fair. And I don't disagree with that, but to me, those are, those are adjusting your action items and your goals. Those aren't necessarily, in my mind, going to, I can't imagine anything that would come up that would make these eight. You know what? Quality infrastructure is no longer important. Like.
Yeah, some of those overarching kinds of things, I think that, that's true. And we should, those shouldn't change very often.
No, but the goals and the actions, absolutely, because things change constantly. So to me, I guess I would rather have like a, that's what I would like to focus on, even though you're asking us to focus on the far left.
I just want you, once you get started on the far left, then you can work your way to the right.
I don't have a problem with the far left. I mean, it's, these are, you know, pretty much everything that, you know, Zanmylex falls into these. You know, if we want to follow, if we want to flow them back to a, you know, an initiative, that's, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
Is everyone okay with using those words? And you can adjust the words if you'd like to, but starts with those, is those are okay?
The only addition I would have is for that first, well, the current first one, build quality infrastructure. I would have build and maintain quality infrastructure, so. Because at this point, we've started to do some of that building and we need to also make sure we maintain what we've built.
But everyone else is okay with the other three then?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, sounds good. Just going to put a star there so we can use the same ones. All right. Then we got here again, starting with the left, over to the right. What are some big goals you want to see? And I'll use that term of a 10-year goal. And the reason why I use 10 years is because those typically land up with a CIP project or a CIP item or something that you may see in 10 years that a comp plan would happen. So that's why I use 10-year goals is that typically, you know, goes with a long-term plan, comp plan, et cetera, et cetera. Again, these goals can change. All of this stuff to the right can change. We try to keep the initiative the same, but those still might change.
To Dennis's point, I really like some of these goals, but they're, they're old ones. Where are we at with them? Like, develop comprehensive transportation plan. I mean, we've been asking for that on planning commission, like, at every other meeting practically.
Actually, I think what, my, my, my take on that is that we have a transportation plan, but some people, maybe rightly so, think it's inadequate.
Well, it's currently not accurate. The one that's posted on the website is no longer valid. It's the X, that's, that's posted on the website.
Yep, but it, and I don't know what the mechanics are of that because.
We need to update that. I noted that on your email, but I agree.
But did we ever, we did update the comp plan for that, right? Okay.
It just never got updated on our website.
And that's been brought up to me too, that there's a few things on the website that are.
Well, yeah, there's more than, more than a couple.
So I guess, I guess the question I have then is, what is the mechanism for checking in on our goals, right? And saying, okay, have we actually reached this goal? If not, why not? Like, what was the barrier that prevented us from reaching this goal? If we have met it, do we check it off and like modify it? Like, what does that process look like?
So we can utilize that develop comprehensive transportation plan. So we create a goal and then we have an indicator to figure out, okay, are we making progress towards that goal? Is that, is that goal getting, going to get met in one of them that's, what does it say? Ability to move throughout the city.
City limits and beyond.
City limits and beyond. Though that's kind of a, what I would say, a generic kind of indicator, but our target was having a park and ride facility established and what are the.
1223.
And then what's the other one? Something else after that, right?
Expansion of roadway connections.
Okay, expansion of roadway connections. So that's a target. Now, if there's a specific item that the council wants to do as a target item of, okay, we're going to have an indicator and the indicator is going to be, can we move throughout the city? But what's the actual target of, we want to make sure that we hit there? And in other terms, I think what I used is, you know, what signifies we cross that finish line? What signifies that goal is completed? And if that is, we have an updated transportation plan, then that's what needs to go on the target if we have an updated transportation plan. Once we hit that, then to your point, the next year, you'd say, oh, that goal's done. That's done, then we go to the next thing. So we want to make sure that we're developing goals that have action items appropriate to them so that we know, this is a long-term goal. We might have six action items on the right-hand side that get us to that goal. So it's not just every year we're updating, okay, that one single goal.
Yeah.
But that, I mean, that's a great point. I mean, I don't, I don't want to expand on it anymore than, but it is dead, but.
So building off of that, park and ride facility established 1223, did that happen?
No.
So.
I don't think it's going to either.
So again, then like, how are there, if the council, if the current council is no longer interested in that, would just take it off? But like, what happens if you guys were halfway through with that and the new council is like, no, we don't like that idea anymore? It's already like in progress.
I think once you're, once you're into it and developing it, you're stuck.
Well, it depends on how much loss you had accepted.
Right, true.
So then I guess my question is, why was there a hard date put on that?
We wanted it done, but that was the target essentially. We wanted to have this done by this date.
Yeah, I don't even.
I don't know why.
Being.
But again, this is, we're talking four years ago, so you're stretching my memory on that.
Did you set up the park and ride?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
It's been way back, way back there.
At that time, we had talked about doing a park and ride facility. That was in '21, but again, I was, I wasn't as in this capacity. I was just a finance.
Yep, yep. Yeah, and there's probably a lot of things in here that you look at and, oh, hmm, yeah, but.
Really, realistically, that could get scratched off if everybody agrees. I don't, I don't think it's going to happen.
Yeah, we can either start fresh or you guys can start, whatever you guys want to do.
What is the?
That's the temperature there.
Method here? Yeah, like, are we going to go through each one of these one by one and cross them out? Are we going to start fresh? Like, what is the thought process? I mean, not completely fresh because we kept the four on the side.
To me, if you're going to use this as a template, you got to go in there and pick out what's not going to be used. I mean, it doesn't need to leave it on there, in my opinion, if you're not going to do it.
Right, if, so I guess my question is more, are we starting here and crossing off and adding? Or are we starting here?
With a blank sheet.
Blank sheet. Because it's two different approaches and we're kind of jumping back between both of them. So I'm just trying to make sure that I'm tracking.
I think it's easier to cross off and add if you're going to use this as a template.
That's the mayor council decision, that's not mine. So I look to you guys on what you want to do.
I tend to think, because if we're going to start fresh, I think we need more than an hour.
We need a couple, three more minutes.
Yes. I agree, so.
Most people work better from an existing thing that they can destroy than a blank page.
Okay.
At least in my experience.
I hear you. I just, if we sit and we talk for 10 minutes on each square, we're not going to get anywhere.
Yep.
But starting from scratch, we're not.
No, no, I, I agree.
So I don't know, you know, I don't know if we have all of it done right now, but I need to have a good direction able to put this document back in front of you guys again in two weeks and say, here's what I came back from notes of the meeting. Are you guys good with those? We can still make corrections at the 25th meeting if we need to. This doesn't, this doesn't get adopted until you guys are good with the document. So again, I'm happy to help with developing action items and adjusting things and whatever, but the goal is just to have something for staff to look at and go, okay, we need to get this done this year, this done this year to make the council's objectives of what you want done, so.
I think the top one's pretty much, the water supply thing, I think is pretty much handled until any more grant money happens. And I don't know that there's much else that we can get, get going on that.
Yeah, so the goal was, uh.
Can you go back?
Promote, yep, yep. Promote a, promote a safe and reliable water supply, which was something that was mentioned, specifically the historic village water plan. If you're looking for a specific item, what you could say is that's an action item. If everyone's in agreement of an action item, we could do a historic village water plan. Again, that's a one- to two-year goal. Doesn't mean it's going to get done this year, but it would at least be started or at least initiated this year. And then the target could be, you know, whatever you guys want to do. If that's specific to the historic village, you could say we want to have a target of having equitable water across the city. Right now, we don't have that. That might be your target. That's when you know you hit that goal. And then you can always adjust the target, like, okay, now we're this part, now we can adjust it to this. The goal might stay the same, but your target might change.
And I think safe and reliable water is still a major issue in this city. I mean, I heard that a lot when I was out door knocking. So that needs to stay in our 10-plus goals, whether like, some of the specific action items have been completed, absolutely. But the long-term goal of providing safe and reliable water supply, I think, needs to stay there.
So.
Well, it needs to stay. I mean, we're not, Old Town, I mean, it's only going to happen sooner if we get grant money, I think.
Yep.
But this is a 10-plus year, so it just needs to stay there. Otherwise, you don't even know to look for grants.
But I think the council's done. I mean, the, the well floor is going to be of the, the well treatment thing. That's pretty much accomplished or until it's, until it's, the faucet is turned on, we can't do much more.
I think that the key outcome indicator, number of resident complaints, I don't like as an indicator. I think with water, you can use water quality as the measure.
So what would I just say, meets all standards? Primary and secondary standards?
I think it already does.
It does not, does not meet secondary standards.
I was going to say, you might want to be careful about secondary.
Yep, primary meets, but it does not meet secondary standards. Is that what you want to do?
I mean, it's one of our goals, long-term, in 10-plus years, that it should meet secondary standards as well.
That's, that's the indicator that we're going to use then, instead of having resident complaints be our indicator, we're going to say it meets all of the primary and secondary standards as our indicator. And our, and the target then would be equitable water across the city, which means that everyone has the same type of water. That seems, that seems good, yep.
Yep. Even if Mrs. 1346 isn't happy, as long as you can say it meets all the standards.
And then to one of your goals up there received from council, I'm going to put as an action item would be a historic village water plan. Actually, you know, what are you going to do to make that right now?
Oh, as an action item?
That's an action item would be, okay, what are we going to do to get that water to be equitable across the city? Because right now, we're working on the well treatment plant. That'll be done January or February of 2026. We just got an updated date. So, but the action item would be, this historic village water plan would be step number one of many. Obviously, the action items are going to be updated once a year at least. This will be reviewed annually, but the idea is to try to change as minimal as possible so we're not revamping the wheel. Okay. Next one?
Transportation plan and at some point, we got to get a, in my opinion. I mean, I don't want it to happen yet, but we need an alignment for the, for the river crossing. I'll say it that way. I mean, it's going to happen someday. Maybe I'll be dead by then.
What's that mean though? What do you mean?
We need an alignment coming to Zanzibar off of Brockton. To me, that's a really important.
Off of the River Road?
No, coming from Brockton going, I mean, we're talked about connecting Zanzibar.
Parkway?
Yeah.
Okay.
To me, that needs to be lined up at some point.
With?
With Zanzibar.
Yep.
We don't have any line going across there. And then at the end of Zanzibar up by, on the north side of Adrian's, where's it going from there?
Yeah, that, okay, now I understand, yep.
Now, by doing that, we're indirectly telling the state that we're all for this river crossing, which some people are, some people aren't.
Yeah, I don't think we are. I mean, we're, we're planning for something that will very likely.
That's a long-term deal.
Three or four years.
Well, we, I mean, even if the river crossing never happens, we still need another north-south route to the city. And that's the Dayton Parkway.
Yep.
I'm going to change, I'm going to use the goal instead of what it's on there right now. I'm going to say it's establishing a comprehensive roadway system.
Yes.
Does that seem like a good goal?
That's better than.
Yes.
What's your indicator going to be that we made it? Or that we're going to measure it and we're moving towards it?
That we have one? That's public wire on the website that is actually accurate? That someone could plan according to?
Basically, what are we testing against? What are we trying to?
It's a very subjective. I mean, right now, it's north-south routes are very limited.
So do you want that to be an indicator, like, north-south connections between?
Sure, I mean, that's really the, the point is to get more ability to go from the River Road south.
And right now, we're very limited with that. And fixing, making that connection from Zanzibar all the way up to the River Road would greatly ease.
Do you want to, an indicator that I could use as, is it travel time across the city? Is that an indicator that you can measure or what are we measuring here?
Well, so one of the questions I have within that is, are we, is our primary concern helping the residents of Dayton move around Dayton? Or is our primary concern helping people who don't live here get through us as fast as possible? Because. But like, because the way you design it, like, so one of the things that came with the planning commission was like talking about the Zanzibar, Dayton Parkway and like how many curves are in that road? And the more curves there are, the more it slows people down. And some people complain about that. I'm like, but I would, as a person living there, I would like to slow them down as much as I physically can. And curves are going to do unfortunately more than a police officer is because they're, you know, the curves are what's going to slow them down. So I'm like, make that road as curvy as possible. Because I don't care if the. because I don't care if the person who's trying to get to their cabin in the North Woods can get through as quickly as possible, I have no interest in making their drive time faster. I just want, like, myself to be able to get in and out in a reasonable time, but also be safe. Um, so I think that's something, I don't know if that's a key outcome indicator, um, so I, I think, but I think as we have to, when we're putting that plan together, I think we have to be thoughtful about who are we actually concerned about? Are we concerned about Dayton residents, or are we concerned about other people? Because it'll change the way that plan looks.
I would say use your major roads to get people in and out and the local roads for.
And this would be a major.
That's gonna be a major road.
And part of the problem is, you know, other than Brockton, you know, they find a way north, their south.
So an indicator that I'm hearing, I just wanna make sure, I'm trying to write this out, indicator that I'm hearing is number of north-south connections.
Major, major north-south connections.
Number of, that's the indicator, okay, sorry.
East West is gonna take care of itself.
What do you wanna say, like, major and minor? Like, major for non, like, because those are two separate populations and on, and two separate uses, so major north-south and minor north-south.
Yep, got it. Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm trying to. Uh, what's the target going to be? What do we wanna aim for?
Um, it's really wrapped up in the Parkway, Zanzibar, and beyond. I don't know what that means. I mean, we have a heck of a conundrum with Parkway, so we've gone over this 418 times.
How much are, are you willing to accept?
A loss?
Or cost?
It's getting hotter. Um, I don't know what that means.
I just think that, that alignment needs to be done and put on a map.
I think that's the goal. I think that, not the goal, but the.
That's.
The target is to.
That we have that alignment on a map.
So is the, is the target then just having the alignment on a map? Is that the target, that's what we're shooting for?
That'd be a big thing.
Well, so there's one there now.
It's not accurate.
There's one there, well.
It's not accurate, though. I mean, by leaving it there, I, I get what you're saying.
But that's also not fair to people buying property.
That's not the right way to do it.
That's not fair to people who are planning and investing in large sums of money.
I agree.
And you can't develop that area if you don't, if you already know in the back of your mind that that's not the way it's gonna be. That whole, what do we call it, the master plan area? I mean, you gotta have a, you gotta have a roadway, otherwise, how do you decide what you're doing?
I agree. I'm just saying that, that I think the problem now is that some of us don't agree with.
Oh, I don't, I'm not.
What's going on, so that's the problem. I don't know how you, how you fix a target for that, so.
The state didn't put that Brockton interchange there for our benefit, trust me.
Oh, I don't know.
Is our target having a road plan that we, that everyone on council actually agrees to and isn't constantly undermining?
Sure, if the council wants to have one, then.
That's a.
They write all those words in that target if they can.
You can soften that a little bit.
Yeah, a road plan that, you know, the majority of us buy into. And like I said, we're really talking about that road, right? I mean, there's not, you know, how much otherwise outside of that.
Well, Fernbrook, I would argue, I mean, whatever happens here will have an impact on Fernbrook. Because that's the other north-south for a while, but.
I mean, it's alignment, that Zanzibar alignment is probably the only north-south road you're gonna get.
Oh, yeah, but I'm just saying, if, if I were a resident looking at this and I had complaints, a question I would have is that, like, Fernbrook has come up repeatedly, so a target would be like, have we, I don't, I don't know, but I do think, I do think the residents on Fernbrook have valid concerns about the amount of traffic and the speed and like safety concerns, when you have so many houses on Fernbrook. So would a target be that we've found a way to mitigate some of the issues on Fernbrook, or that we've?
I wouldn't, because we, we've gone over Fernbrook a billion times, and there's no, there's no answer we can come up with. That doesn't cost a boatload of money. Um, even if the county comes in there and fixes it, there's only one fix, and that's multi-lane, and that means those houses are gone.
Yeah, that, that may happen, and it may happen in 2030, it may happen, but a couple of roundabouts are gonna.
We put some thoughts on paper for that target.
You know what, actually, the roundabouts.
Roundabouts are gonna help.
That's true.
For the next 10, 15 years, they're gonna help.
I think that's, that's what we.
Do you wanna, do you wanna change that as a target? So right now, I have possibly it's a road plan adopted and accepted by council, or we could have it as roundabouts established on Fernbrook, or what do you guys wanna have?
Both?
Yeah, we can, yeah. Do you want those as both targets?
We're both again?
So.
Roundabouts.
Roundabouts and, was it just roundabouts on Fernbrook?
Roundabouts on Fernbrook, yeah.
Okay, and the other one is a road plan adopted and accepted by council, that's what I have.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Hard and don't, okay. Is there any things that you wanna work on, action items that are out there that you wanna work on to get these things, to get the target accomplished?
Well, one of them's gonna come up automatically, the roundabout's gonna come up automatically.
I mean, there might not be an action item to get these goals, it might just automatically happen, but.
We'll see where this topic coming up here on the 25th takes us, but I mean, if, if that happens, maybe that pushes that along a little faster.
Yeah, and it really needs to happen on Rush Creek, but I mean, the 114 thing is.
I agree.
Oh, I will say.
We've got one on there, second one from the bottom at the, at the column.
Planning out the commercial areas in Dayton Parkway Interchange?
Grant, yeah, yes, that's a launch.
Oh, yeah, review grants for abilities to fund more projects, Fernbrook issues.
Oh, sorry, so that's what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say review grant opportunities.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, it's another, I guess, another action item, and that could be just to beat the heck out of the county.
I was gonna say, meet with the county.
And, yeah, it's, I don't know if you've talked to Champlin, I talked to him, and they basically just had a campaign to hammer the county with phones, with letters, with all kinds of stuff to get those four ways in there.
Well, and they got the, I mean, they got the residents involved, and, and that's what our, the residents on Fernbrook have started that process, they've already met with the county, I think, at least once, if not twice.
Sure, okay, that's a good action, like I said, overview grant opportunities and then meet with the county as much as possible.
And spread it around, right? Like, have us call them, have, you know, it doesn't just have to be like, if we're hammering them hard.
Okay, item number three underneath goals, we're doing okay at times. Any changes to those?
Public facilities? You guys got enough.
No, I think we.
I think that's a fair goal, and it's more than City Hall to me.
It's a fair goal, yeah.
Okay, so that's a fair goal, the goal's good, you guys are okay with the goal, from what I'm hearing.
Income.
The goal, to me, is a no-brainer, plan for facility needs. Okay, yep.
I guess the question I have is, are we preparing or are we actually meeting? Because as this, as this states, the goal says, prepare a plan, doesn't actually say that we have to do anything, just here's a plan, or is our goal to actually meet the public facilities' needs? Like, what's the actual goal? Making a plan that we can.
Is it plan and build?
Yeah, like, plan and build, or like, plan and execute, but like, right now, the goal is stated as prepare a plan.
Maintain a stable plan for public facilities.
You could say it, maybe, uh, address needs for public facilities to meet city's growth. Takes the plan piece out of it.
Yep, address. Address public facilities to meet city's growth?
Sure.
That seem reasonable to everybody?
Can you read that one more time?
Address public facilities to meet city's growth.
Needs.
Oh, sorry, needs?
Public facility needs.
Yeah, yeah.
Just keeping the second part of that.
Got it, yep, to meet city's growth, okay. What's your?
I like that better, because then the action is doing something.
Yep, outcome indicator.
Have we met this one?
No.
Space for all current staff equipment storage.
Well, yes, currently, currently, yep.
Okay, so that one has been met.
There's pretty good progress there, though. I mean, it's not like you're, maybe this building could use a little bit, a couple more offices.
Um, indicator is not bad, I think most of our equipment's stored securely, I don't know if all of it is, but, I mean, it's a good indicator, I think that indicator makes sense.
Are there others?
I don't think so.
Do I have anybody out on the lawn?
I've got a morgue, not yet at least, I might be on, I might be on the roof here by the weekend, but you never know. And what's our target?
In summer, that's nice, winter, not so much.
Yeah, that, obviously, that targets.
Your target, that's not gonna happen.
Unless you got a time.
Does it need, I mean, is there, what are the needs for City Hall remodel?
I mean, to me, the.
Well, we did not, we decided not to put in the City Hall remodel at the current moment, because it was, we got a quote, and I can't remember how much it was, a million and a half, and you got four, you got four extra offices out of it, because you had to blow out an office to make four more offices, and it didn't make any sense.
Yeah.
So there's no reason to do that, no. We only looked at remodeling this floor, we didn't look at remodeling upwards.
It's probably more.
But probably could be more expensive, likely, but we can get quotes and get information.
It was built for that, though.
It was, yep, there's an elevator shaft in that wall over there, is correct.
So I guess a question I have is, how needed is that? Like, do we need more space here?
You will, at some point, yeah, certainly, when that some point.
Probably in the next five, six, five to 10 years, you're going to, probably, right?
It's gonna be before then.
Safe, I would say.
Even if actually a lot of people don't have the space that we need to facilitate, a lot of people coming in here.
Yeah, depending on the time of year, if it's elections, I know that Amy has mentioned multiple times that we don't have, we don't meet current standards or setbacks, or whatever you wanna call it, in the space.
I mean.
These for elections, and that's every other year.
Stu, Stu, yeah.
Depending on which way your view is, we need it now versus we need it later, but again.
Well, and that one, to me, is a big trade-off as to the, the cost versus what you get out of it. I don't know what the target would be other than the indicator. Um, I mean, your goal is to, to get space, right?
Is your, is your target, once you, once we've completed the public facilities, what's with addressing the facilities' needs, I guess, is the question, so, I don't know if that's, that's a target, like, once, once it's, once we know we've got there, essentially, the words are, once we've hit the target, we know we've gotten that goal done.
So I think one of the things for me is, the goal and the key outcome indicator are about public facilities, not about staff, where the City Hall remodel is about staffing needs, and you guys are not equipment. So, right, the key in, outcome indicator is that all equipment is stored securely, it says nothing about space for like actual employees to do their job. Um, does that need to be a second indicator?
It's on there, the second indicator, that's the space for all current staff and then dash and then.
Oh, got it, got it, got it, okay.
All secured, securely, uh, secured.
Okay.
Stored securely, sorry.
So.
Essentially, what do we know we got that target to meet? My guess is completion of whatever the remodel or new building or whatever it is, is what's the target.
Yeah, but it's more than City Hall.
Yep.
It's public works, it's fire, it's police.
Yeah, I agree.
That's where I would go with that, is, is what is the, what happens to this building? Very likely, or, I mean, we've talked about it, somewhere in the next six to 10 years, there's gonna be a, a new fire building, then what happens with that? Then all of a sudden, does that become eight more offices?
Yeah, it's a huge question, it's just, that's kind of along the action item.
But that, that can't wait, six to eight years, I mean, supposedly, it can't wait.
Yep.
Is it developed a plan? Like, we have a developed plan, accepted plan by council of?
Sure.
Facility needs or whatever, or accepted plan by council of, I don't know what you wanna call it, but.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And action items are a lot, because you gotta figure out what makes sense, what doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a project, for sure.
Where we don't think.
I don't know if there's an action item at this current moment, the only one I can think of is a facilities, facility need study, but I don't know when to complete, that's, that's the next step.
I'd start your study.
I'd hear a study, and just take, make a decision.
We can make a decision now you want, but.
Well, I guess the question.
Make the thing like a Taj Mahal would be good.
I mean, a lot of studies have been done, I think part of my struggle is, I would like to see these studies, right? Like, they're done, and then you get new people in, and we don't see them, and like, that's a lot of time, effort, and money spent on those studies. Um, so an action item I would have is, I think the new, at least the new council people need to see the existing studies that have been done, I don't know, I can't, shouldn't speak for Stephanie, but I wanna see them, um, because that gives me a more informed position. So maybe not new studies, but a review of the studies that have been done, so.
I don't know if we've done, honestly, I don't know if we've done one on the facilities.
I don't remember.
If we did one, it would've been back in 2015 or 2016.
I haven't seen one if they did.
It's been a while, 2007, was what Amy mentioned, which I think is probably accurate.
I don't remember having one done in the last 10, 12 years.
That's what I mean.
And I don't know that you really need one, I mean, I don't know what you.
No, I don't think it, I don't think it.
See, part of why I wanna see it is, I wanna see what it gives you, right? Like, if the study is something that, like, could easily just be done, like, because some studies give you really amazing things, like, that was worth it, and other studies, you're like, that was not worth the time and money. So even though it's old and out of date, I'd be interested in seeing it, just to know what it would provide if we did do a new one. But if it's pretty much pointless, then it's not worth it.
Every city that I've talked to that did any sort of revamping of public facilities, they did this facility need study, because it shows, do we need to have this, and they're And they're also planning for the future if they're a growing community or a non-growing community is, do you really need this? Like, you can use New Hope as an, for example, they're not growing anymore, but they still needed a new facility, so they built a new facility. They had to do a public facility needs study to figure out what they actually needed.
Well, I just wanted to.
And again, I know you guys don't like studies, but.
Call it a plan.
Waste of money.
Okay.
Yeah.
An assessment, is that better? An assessment?
It's got some action associated.
Sure.
As long as you're not paying somebody to tell you what to do.
Trigger, not trigger PTSD.
And, yeah, there's.
Okay.
Probably four or five bullets under, under that, so.
I'll call it a public facilities assessment. Okay, next one.
Quality local street system? Hey, I think we're good there. I mean, we've spent a lot of time on that one.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we're actually in pretty good shape.
Do you want to erase it? Do you want to?
No, I think it has to stay.
Okay.
I think, you know, the, the street survey that we, we did kind of formed the basis of that.
That's kind of a plan now, for the next five to ten years.
Continue to implement it.
Paving management's, uh, plan?
Plan, the plan.
Okay. Do you guys still go with that?
That's what it says right there, pavement management plan.
Is, uh, indicator still good?
Yeah.
That's what we're shooting for at least.
You can change the date.
Think it's called the PQI, we can change the name of it, but that's what we use on the pavement management plan.
That's good. It would probably help to go over kind of what we did with our new members, so.
Yep.
Just because I thought it was a very well-done process, so although.
This next one, to me, the next one's gonna kind of take care of itself.
Okay, um, so target, do you want a target on that one? Just continue to, continue growth or continue development of local streets or continue?
Uh, which one?
Uh, sorry, the target of.
For the quality local streets.
Quality local streets, you got the indicator, uh, outcome indicator is the same.
No, that's.
The target, we have the target, we did that already, so.
Yeah.
If you wanted to say continued.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Anything other action items you guys want to take out of those items at all? Do you want to have a conversation about? One of the things that I'm looking at is the resolving the parkway conundrum that I see if there is a goal. Is that something you want to add and add as an action item?
Yeah, I think that needs to be handled.
Needs to be. Otherwise, we don't have.
Whether that's, I don't know what that is, but I can put it as an action item and figure out what that, what that means. Resolving it, I don't know what that.
That, that was the whole, that's mine. That was the whole business about.
How it got where it is.
How it got up to the T and what we can do to mitigate that.
Sure.
And I know we've.
We had, we had a PowerPoint on up from Jason.
I know.
How did we get here? Thank you very much, Jason.
And it was, it was good, but it's just, we're still here. Um, and I don't know how to get out of here. That's my problem with it, so.
Yeah, and one of the ones I do is a state upgrade zoning plan and they, they play together because if you don't know where the road is, how can you zone it?
Yes, that's true. The land use.
I was going to put that one in the next one, which is the thoughtful and thoughtful development, because I think it would goes into turn. The action that I looked at is review options for parkway. That seemed like an action that we can do and then we'll talk about it. It'll basically be engineering work through different scenarios of what to do. That way we can at least bring it to council and you guys can have it. Then you have an idea of what we're gonna figure out.
I don't know how to say it, but I think it needs to be more than review options. I want to get something out of this. I mean, we.
We're looking at twelve things and we didn't pick any, so we're done.
Yeah, we need to, what's the conclusion? What's the, what's the deliverable out of that?
I can't call it a study, so. What would you, what would you like done?
I mean, we need to adopt, uh, new zone, like, adopt new zoning for that region, adopt a road plan and zoning for.
Are we still talking about the road plan?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just talking strictly on the road. That's my action item of why I'm asking, because it came up there as a goal and I tried to put it as an action item for us to meet, but. If, that's why I use review options for parkway as, as an action. Doesn't mean that it can't be deliverable to it, I just.
If, yeah, if, I guess, if it ends up being left as is and this might get to an action item, we're gonna have to figure out how to fix the issue. Because nothing moves forward until that road goes, so. Yeah.
Sure. If I think of something differently, like I said, it's just not final, we'll set it out.
Solve the parkway conundrum, that's the.
That's, that's the action item?
That's the target.
That's the target.
I figured everybody knew what that meant, but I don't know if they might not.
Been on planning commission long enough that yes.
Okay, all right, next one. Sorry, we'll go to the next one. Got, got it, we're good. Um, encouraged to.
Uh, what's it, encourage.
Are we down here?
Yep.
Encourage diversity and manage thoughtful development.
Development, so that's the initiative and we'll go with next line.
Housing options, yeah.
I personally don't care about affordability. I hear that word all the time and I, I don't care if the home costs five hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand.
I fundamentally disagree with you on that one.
I don't know, that's the city's business.
Is the goal good? The goal, the box, is the goal, the goal seems okay for everybody?
I'm okay with the.
Creating a variety of housing options, that seems good for people.
Oh, I'm fine with that one.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Indicator?
I don't know what some of that means.
It feels like a nonsense statement.
I'm not saying it's the right statement. What would you like as the outcome indicator that, you know, we.
I mean, I think, so if the goal is create a variety of housing options, and the indicator is that we do in fact have a variety of housing options. But, you know, like, we should have them. We should have different sizes, we should have different price points, um, we should have different, um, meet different, different, like, aging populations, first-time home buyers, people with kids, people in retirement, right? Like, we should have a diversity of housing options.
Well, you're gonna have that already. I mean, all the houses that have been here for twenty years are gonna be cheaper than the houses built in the last five years.
Yeah.
So your pricing is going to vary all the way through.
Funny enough, I don't think you'll ever build new that, under, that brings that price down, legacy homes. You're never gonna do that. A new, even a new.
Do you want to review housing stock? Do you want to say, like, the type of housing and do you want to say it's based on the price point and view price points by percentages? Do you?
I mean, we realistically have it all already. We have two acre lots, we have two and a half acre lots, we got, uh, three per acre.
I think, uh, I guess I'm giving away my age here, but, uh, I don't know that we've got addressed much in the way of senior housing.
We have, we don't have that.
Or, I know it came up at the planning commission meeting around, you know, the transitional care kinds of things. We certainly haven't got anything like that. In the city anyway, so to me it's more than just, you know, affordability. I think that's an important question too, but I, I think a broad range of housing options for people of different ages.
Yeah, housing type and lot size? That seem like a reasonable number. I mean, housing, again, housing type I'm looking at, you got senior, you got townhomes, you got, um, quadplexes, you have single family, you got apartment buildings, that's why, that's what I'm looking at.
I think it's more something that you can control or guide and less about what the price point is. Because you can't really say what the market's gonna be for how much something's gonna cost, but you can say, we've got these different types of homes and they're offered, right? So like, you can't fully dictate the market.
The idea would be to provide this to council once a year probably or something, just to review where we're at and what we have available. Not saying it's available for sale, but.
And I think we can do some of that through zoning, um, whether it's multifamily or, I don't know if there's a zoning for, uh, assisted living or, um, senior housing.
No. Assisted living almost is gonna have to be a targeted, almost like a targeted.
Particular area.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I think we have some ability to influence that where, whether, you know, Tom Dean is gonna build five hundred thousand dollar homes or eight hundred thousand dollar homes.
But there are things you can do about affordability and that's in the zoning and that's in the requirements for the homes, right? When you make everyone have the most expensive possible features.
I'll give you that, yep.
You force the houses to be more expensive. Like, what the hell's wrong with vinyl siding? Sorry, I'm gonna stick to that one. There is nothing wrong with vinyl siding, nothing.
I don't disagree.
And it keeps houses cheaper, but when we put in all of our codes that every new house has to have the most expensive option for literally everything, we are driving those prices up artificially.
Or the, the mandatory two-car garage. And, and the reason this came up in my mind, I think it was recently, but also these, these, these forty-foot lots that Tom's talking about. Even if we let, say, thirty percent of them through, how do you get a two-car garage in that? You gotta consume most of the house.
They're twenty by twenty is what the garage is.
Yeah, and so that leaves ten feet.
That's two Malibos, not a Doolian pickup truck.
I, I guess I'm just getting at the point that, that we do have, I, the, the vinyl thing to me is kind of a bugger too. I, I don't understand why we have a problem with vinyl. I, I, vinyl used to be crap, but I, anyways, we're gonna.
Keep us on track here, we're moving, we're doing good.
And to me, this is regulatory. This is regulatory capture. That's what this is.
I think the, again, we're, we're on the right path. This is good. What target are we shooting for? Is, what's the target that's sitting there?
I think what you said is.
Number of units available.
Number of units available.
That seems like a good target. Do we want to say it's more about reviews in the house, review the housing type and, you know, look for development that will help those percentages? Or what's our target that we're aiming for? E- equal, equal percentage available at, for.
Well, I don't think it has to be equal, it's, because.
It's just gotta be available.
It's got, well, and it's not just available, it's proportionate, right? Like.
So proportionate housing stock available, or housing types available?
Yeah, proportionate to the population, right? Like, how many, like, they don't necessarily be equal numbers of everything, but as people, because also part of it is as you age out, not age out, but like, when you're no longer having a yard that you want to maintain and you don't want to shovel anymore, right? You're gonna move into a smaller, most people move into a smaller space with less maintenance. Well, we don't need an equal number of senior citizens, how is it, like, units necessarily as we do for, like, little kids.
Proportionate housing type.
Yeah.
Proportionate housing types available seems like a reasonable target to have.
Because I also want to say, like, we've got one citizen met it, like, we've got one affordable house.
Is there any action items we have out of that that we want to work on? Doesn't mean we have to, I'm not saying every goal has to have an action item.
Well, um, obviously the, the, before you're gonna talk about large lots, that's clearly a.
So it's, you want to look at A three district?
I think, A three district.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's a great action item for how do we get different types of housing. Great.
I think the large area plans might play a factor in there too, because we can.
Do you want to complete one large area plan? That seemed like a reasonable action item? Again, these are, when I say action items, these are one to two-year goals. They might take two years to complete, but.
I, I, I would, I personally would like to see these large area plans cover every development. Only because you, you don't have this hundred acre, hundred acre, hundred acre thing and where everything is replication and it just seems to me to be not only inefficient, but it's not. And I don't care if it, I don't know that we need to plan it out or, uh, you know, a developer plans it out. The other thing it does is it controls that ten a, that ten-year plan. So that's the haphazard thing that we've always had, where we.
We're talking about comp plan stuff there.
Well, it's, it's comp plan stuff too. Yep, it's staging, um, because, I mean, that, to me, that fixes a lot of problems, but, and it will help with the diversity of housing too, because if you, if you say, if you kind of plan that out, you're, you're kind of covered to some extent.
Do we want to do that or do you want to have one completed by somebody?
I think a developer's not gonna do it because they're not gonna have.
Developers don't like it.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're not gonna have any property. I mean, they might have a hundred acres, but like, Dennis, you're talking about hundreds of acres.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be that all three hundred are gonna get developed in this next three years.
Right.
It, it could be.
Over a ten-year cycle, whatever it is.
Yeah.
When is the new, uh, there's a new plan coming, the.
Comp plan?
Yeah.
Yep. It'll start middle of the, of this year. It will last two and a half years, give or take, or longer.
So, example, if we're, you're not going over like a sort of staging plan for, you know, a certain decade, that would be our large area.
Large area plan, that's correct.
But I guess my, my question is, is working on the comp plan gonna address some of these things and is that an action item?
Sure will.
I think it will, yeah.
Like, that's something we'll be doing.
No matter what, but I think that fits here.
Yep, that could be an action item.
As an action item.
Start working on comp plan, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And as part of that is the more larger.
You could have that as one, that's.
Relates to large area.
Yeah.
Plans, I think, and what do we have left for acreage in the, in the current and twenty twenty staging areas?
If you include twenty twenty?
Include twenty twenty, there's more, but current is basically done.
Yeah, so.
And not all the way, but.
Twenty twenty and it, and the number's not important, I just feel like we.
It's not current until twenty twenty-nine.
Our goal is to have more influence on, on what goes in those, in those debate staging areas, then we need to be doing large area plans that ultimately covers that next staging area.
Especially if they're gonna start this business of averaging out our densities over that staging area, that ten-year thing. I, to me, the, the larger area plan, it takes care of that big gamble where you just throw a bunch of acres and it's just lump. And if they get all consumed in two years, you're toast. You gotta, you know, whereas if you have the larger area plan, you can just say, I'm pulling this into current.
So do you want to do the large area plan based on the, um, staging areas? It's like focus on the twenty twenty?
I think the staging areas are, to some extent, messed up.
Okay.
Um, if you look at them, they're kind of piggly, piggly.
So is the first step to update the staging plan and then the second step to look at the next staging plan and plan that one out?
Maybe. I, I might flip those.
Okay.
Because updating the staging plan is really gonna be part of the comp plan.
It's part of the.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
And that's gonna take us several years to work through that, I think.
I think an action item is starting, starting to work on the comp plan, it seems like an actionable item. There could be things that come from that that we can work on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next one. Sorry, trying to keep us moving here, we got about twenty-five minutes left and we're, we're doing okay, but next one, I don't know what the next one is.
Encourage healthy lifespan of both residential and commercial. Not even sure about that. Well, the residential is taking care of itself. I mean, commercial.
I mean, not necessarily, because, I mean, there's a lot, I mean, people who own their homes tend to take better care of them than renters do. And so one thing in that, and not universally, but, um, do we, so, I mean, one of the reasons housing prices have skyrocketed is because these big firms have come up, bought out of the low, not low income, but the first-time home buyer prices and then jack up rents and prices for homes. Do we want to put something in there about, I mean, this might actually be more for the first one, about, um, reviewing the rental, the percent of rental properties in Dayton and possibly putting a cap on that?
How would you control that? I mean, and then I'm not gonna tell an apartment building that, no, you can't.
Well, an apartment building is not the same as, but like, what's happening nationally is these companies are coming in, buying the homes that are designated, like, that are built purposely for first-time home buyers. They come in with way more money than any first-time home buyer has. They price them right out. They wind up jacking up the actual prices of the entire community and then turn and rent them. And now they own all of them, so they can fix the rent at a much higher rate and they're pushing people out of communities left and right. Like, it's one of our, that's, that is one of the primary drivers of the housing crisis. And something a city can do is limit the number of people or the number of rentals within a certain area, right?
What is Champlin's rule around that? I don't remember. So many rentals per neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's per acres, but that's, it's a set, I think.
I think Anok had just changed theirs too because of the laws.
Champlin has a whole rental program where the owners have to take a class and there's a lot of steps to actually become a rental unit.
But that goes to the encouraging healthy lifespan of both residential and commercial operations, because again, if like, because someone who owns their home is gonna be more interested in maintaining it than necessarily not all renters and particularly some landlords don't care, right? And so like, having a rental program of some sort would go towards that. Now, obviously there are gonna be people who do it under their radar, of course, there's always going to be, but I hate when people use that as an argument, that's, because then it'd be like, well, then why do we have any laws at all? Like, people break laws and we still have them and we still enforce them to the best of our ability.
So I'm gonna go, is the goal okay or do we want to adjust the goal?
I'm not sure what the goal means, to be honest. Healthy lifespan of both residence or commercial operation.
I think it's mostly, from my perspective, it's trying to be that we want people to maintain their houses and, and maintain the property around here that, so that everyone has a, you know, what do you want to call it? It's gonna stay here for a long time, it's not gonna go away, it's not gonna be a blight, blighted, you know, property. I think that's what it's getting to, doesn't mean that's watered properly.
Seems like a lot of government overreach, I mean, if I don't want to paint my house, that's my business, not the city's.
My blight versus somebody else's blight.
Sure.
If I want to burn my house down, that's my business, not the city's.
Sure.
Somebody's gotta put the fire out.
Also, it depends on who you're right next to. I think maybe not as much you, but if someone in the subdivision decides to do that, all of their neighbors are gonna go up in about three seconds, so, yeah.
That's our own fault.
That's that final side.
And that's because we put them too close.
So, but then that goes back to our responsibility, like, you can't set people up to fail either, um.
And if, yeah, if we don't want that one, we could cross it off.
I just don't know what it really boils down to, because even when I look at the indicator or the target, how to create a grant program for what?
Yeah.
Uh, the grant program was, um, for helping facade programs of commercial properties to make their property, you know, basically be able to do the.
So that, that might make sense.
That's, that, the grant program, that's what it was for, was to be able to help.
This is really HRA, EDA.
Yes.
Oh, you're talking EDA grant.
That's, yeah, that's what the program, that's why we have.
That's for business. Has nothing to do with residential.
Yep.
Did, yeah. That's, that's, I totally.
So that's the grant program.
That's what that was, all right. Well, I don't know.
We can leave it, that's fine, doesn't matter, always, we can do a different target if you want to say, hey, you know what? This is our, you know.
You should probably, you should probably add, maintain the grant program for business or commercial. I mean, that, that's not gonna apply to our residential.
It did.
It did, yep. We had it for this sort of village.
And, and I don't, did anybody make use of it at all? One?
Did they know about it?
Yes.
Okay.
What were you gonna say?
Well, I was coming back to the rental thing and I, I think this goal is vague or broad enough that, you know, has an action item. We, we could develop, uh, the housing rental ordinance. And what that means, you know, in terms of, I mean, I think we want to look at some models of other cities, but if, you know, if we wanna, if that's, that's a concern that there's too much rental being bought up and pricing people out of, out of neighborhoods that we would like to have buy those homes and live there. You know, then, then some kind of framework on how many per neighborhood or, you know, some measure like that, but developing an, an ordinance around rental housing, I think, could be an action item. It'd be something that we could complete.
I don't care. I don't.
I, yeah, I'm.
Doesn't bother me at all. I mean, if, if Polty wants to come in and buy every home in the city of Dayton and they got the money to do it, so what, let it happen?
It's not Polty doing it though, it's rental companies.
Yeah.
That's the problem we had in Sundance Woods, it was a company that bought it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think they own more than just one million in that neighborhood.
Yeah, they, they probably do. The renters I've talked to, they'll rent because they don't want the responsibilities of owning a home, so.
Well, not, not saying we should eliminate rentals, that's not my point. I just, I think we need to be more proactive about it and not reactive in my town neighborhoods.
The council will say we should develop a housing rental.
Yeah.
Something like that, whatever it is in review.
Yeah, what's in it, I think, really, there's a lot more discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But if the goal.
But I think it's worth looking at.
We're okay with the goal, the indicator is okay, or we're gonna say something about more, more of our rentals than we are for funding for an indicator? We could leave it the same and again, we can adjust it later on, just because if there is, I mean, it's, you know, the end will be all forever, but.
I think the rental piece ties into it. I, I think we need to continue to encourage people through some means to, you know, maintain their housing. Because if we're talking about affordable housing, it's the older housing stock that's more affordable and, you know, the more life we get out of that, those houses, um, you know, it just helps us maintain some balance around pricing.
I can do my best to get something back to you guys for that one. Okay, next one. This one is, uh, development consistent with character and scale. I don't know what that means.
I don't know.
Yep, that's what it says.
I think they're all characters, but.
I think we wrote line that whole, uh, because I don't know.
Yeah, we don't have. Yeah, we don't have to have four. Again, this is just a template document. It could be three, it could be two, it could be.
Well, and I don't think it's appropriate for the whole city. I think it's one thing to have like the historic village and have a plan for the historic village, right? And like, if we have got like, um, design guidelines for that, but for the entire city.
Sounds like that line everyone's okay with. Okay, third, uh, fourth one is healthy commercial sector with services and job growth. Increase in local employment and two additional commercial businesses by twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Target, we can change the target if we want to, but what do we start with? The goal is the question. We start with the goal. Are we good with the goal?
I mean, I like the goal of a healthy commercial sector with services and job growth. Though maybe just healthy commercial sector. I don't know what you mean with services and job growth.
You could add, you could add industrial to it and then that's gonna help with your job growth.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna get that now.
We, yeah, the job growth thing is, is a little iffy in my mind because, I mean, we, when we did Graco, right, we gave them, well, gets into some depth, but they had so many jobs that we were very happy with and we gave them tips, blah, blah, blah. And when you get, when we went back and looked, they weren't that great.
Is the indicator, the increase in local employment, do you wanna use that as the indicator?
Well, hard to do because of the companies that are only paying twenty-five bucks an hour. You can't live in Dayton, make them work.
I don't, I don't think that that's.
The indicator's not, if we can.
Well, it's not something we can really control.
The, the indicator?
The indicator. Increase, oh, the, yeah, the.
The indicator is increasing local employment. I think we can a hundred percent control that by approving businesses or not approving businesses. Doesn't have to live here. I'm saying that they.
But do we approve a business, say, that'll bring in two hundred and fifty jobs at twenty-five dollars an hour or twenty jobs at, I mean, to me, I don't know how you, I don't know that that should be.
The indicator?
The indicator. I don't know what the indicator should be, but, um, I mean, it's obviously it'd be lovely if somebody, you know.
This is not leaving Dayton? Is that, is that an indicator?
Can we say something about increasing local employment? You know, encouraging higher paying jobs?
Sure.
Quite sure how to, how to get to that.
You can have whatever indicator you want.
Thing is, we don't target those though, I mean.
Right, we get it.
We get what we get.
Get a target and, well, and, you know, recent example, I mean, states.
Yep.
You know, they kinda found us, right? But they're exactly the kinda thing that we would want. And.
So then the question is.
Certainly, we assisted them in, you know, in being able to take on that site. But, but I don't know how much credit we can claim for that. They found a spot that they, and they needed to grow and they came here.
It sounds like, from what I've understood and maybe I'm wrong, is that generally, the city's been fairly passive. And like, if someone comes to us and says we wanna do this, then we can say yes. But have we actively sought out businesses to recruit them to come to us?
No.
No, not at this one. We've been too busy just handling people that come to us.
But I mean, but I think that's part of your, like.
If we're bored enough, sure, we'll reach out if we even come through.
But I think we can flip the script on that and instead of just taking anything that comes our way, if we actually say, no, our goal is we want X number of jobs that pay this much. And if someone comes and they don't meet that threshold, we say, sorry, no, and we don't even bother to look at their plan. And we, like, if we set the standard, this is what we're looking for. And if you don't meet it, don't even bother wasting your time because we're gonna say no to it and don't come to us. And we maybe go out and be more proactive in seeking out people who actually will give the jobs that we want to have in Dayton. And like, stop being passive and start being proactive about it.
You're gonna have to hire more people.
I mean, but if that's the, like, again, ten plus, you know, this is a ten year goal, right? So like, if that's our ten year goal, then we need to start thinking that way and not just passively sit back and wait for whoever comes to us.
There are gonna be businesses that come in as a result of other businesses and they're gonna pay less money, but that doesn't mean that they're any more worth any less. I'll use a fast food restaurant or a restaurant in general, they're gonna pay less money per hour, but doesn't mean that they're less needed because we have a thousand plus jobs in this community and we have one place for them to go to lunch and it's a quick trip. That's it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, does anyone open for lunch?
Oh, they're not anymore?
They're ours.
Yes, we get Sunday, so.
Yeah, but until you, until you can, until, until the community will support that restaurant, it ain't gonna happen.
My counter argument to you, Sarah, would be that, did we, are we gonna throw that business out because they pay seventeen dollars an hour? When do we want a thirty-five dollar an hour job, but we still need a seventeen dollar an hour job?
And there's still gonna be people in that business that are making a hundred grand.
Well, and I guess.
They're just not the owner of the business or the, or the manager or supervisor.
I guess maybe my point was, have we actively pursued the higher paying jobs or people who would do higher paying jobs?
Just take what comes.
Cause.
We haven't had it, so.
So that's really a marketing effort and something that we're not doing is that. The goal that we, we do more marketing of Dayton as a great place to bring.
Have a business?
It's like saying, Graco, we didn't want you here because you're only paying your management good money and the rest of them are getting twenty-two bucks. I mean, I'd take Graco, I'd, I'd take ten Gracos, you know?
Well, I guess, I mean, so that's my other, like, I think we have to make, be more intentional of, would there have been a better use of that space then? Like, are there other companies that would have, like, had we said no to them and waited for someone better to come?
Well, we also then wouldn't have put in any warehousing or.
Right.
So getting back to the indicator, what are we, what are we, what are we gonna measure for a healthy commercial industrial sector? I think one thing I'm hearing and I mentioned earlier, is that if a business is leaving Dayton, I mean.
I was gonna say.
There's not anybody leaving.
That's a good thing. That's, that's a good indicator.
But we don't have much here.
For now.
Well, businesses are staying and new businesses are coming in, like, yeah.
The, the balance, I guess.
And with the freeway, that's gonna make some things happen.
That way.
Do you wanna limit the amount of warehouses that have minimal jobs?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess that was my point. Like, you had this huge space and you gave it to this thing. Could it, would it have been, had there been more thought involved, would there have been other options that would have used up an equal amount of space and done more or different, better jobs?
Well, we probably wouldn't have done the cubes, but then we would ended up with states.
Right.
That was lucky chance.
It was.
That's just the way it happens.
I know, but like, I don't think, I guess I am uncomfortable just sitting back and being like, well, hopefully luck comes our way. I think we could be more intentional and more mindful, like, purposeful.
In three years, we're gonna have a million dollars a, a year coming out of those businesses over there.
I'll call the indicator the net difference between outgoing and incoming businesses.
Yes, it's positive.
Indicator?
Yes.
Okay, target is to keep that indicator positive?
Positive. Overall net growth.
It seems like it's a good one.
And do we also want to do a separate one for businesses and jobs? Cause they're not, you know, to the point of like.
We could do that too. If that's a different goal you guys wanna make, otherwise we can have it as a target or something.
Again, if the net indicator, like, the net, like, the net number of jobs is either the same or increasing. Cause technically you have.
Employment, sure.
Cause you could have three businesses leave and one business come in, but that business that comes in has way more jobs than the three that left. So, in my mind, that's a trade off I'd be happy to take. So I don't think it's just necessarily the number of businesses, it's the amount of jobs.
Okay.
And or maybe tax dollars if that's, you know, like, the overall tax revenue from our commercial and industrial is like, growing at a certain percent.
Is there anything from the goals here that we have that we wanna put as a action item?
Do we talk about Parks and Trails anywhere?
Yep.
That was the next one.
Next.
Yeah, we're only halfway through.
What's that? Support the growth? Oh, support the growth of existing local and regional businesses? That's a good goal, like it. I don't know how we, what's an action and we do that. What's the action that we do? You know, is it, um, I don't know what an action is. And that's what we should do. Don't get me wrong, just I don't know what the action is to do it.
Just monitor what, monitor what's happening.
I go back to being more proactive about it and like actively recruiting businesses, like actively recruiting businesses that we think would do well in Dayton.
How are you gonna, how are you gonna recruit them though?
I mean, there are lots of local businesses that are looking possibly to expand and are maybe considering different things. And if we go like, hey, are you, you know, like, I'm just, this one pops into my head, Daily Dose in Maple Grove. They had a second location in Brooklyn Park. They closed down, obviously they didn't publish all the, you know, nitty gritty details about why they closed down their Brooklyn Park location. But reach out to them and be like, hey, you know, you used to have a second location, you don't anymore. If you're interested in second location, Dayton has got nothing like that. Like, maybe we, like, could we help you come to our city? Like, what could we do to support you coming? Like.
Sure, who's gonna do that though?
Us, sir, jobs.
I'm sure I'm not gonna call business.
Do it.
I mean, okay.
Okay. We have about five minutes. I don't know if we, we have to have one, which is really good. I really appreciate all the work. I'm gonna look to the mayor. Do you wanna start the next one or do you wanna just?
What they should be doing.
Have comments come back from the council about the last half and, and you guys go ahead and mark it up. I can give you the Excel file. You guys can mark it up and adjust and I can bring it back. I'm gonna look to the mayor, what you guys wanna do next for the council, mayor and council. We have about five minutes.
There's no way you're gonna get through this next.
Oh, no.
We, I, I'm very impressed with what we got through at the top half and I appreciate all the work and, and collaboration. It's been really good. For the, then honestly, I thought we were gonna take, just great.
Just pick another meeting.
So I could either pick the next meeting we can work out as well, or I could say we can, I could give this out as an Excel file and you can give back feedback.
You know, why don't you do that? At least do that. Then maybe we could have another meeting.
It might speed it up too. You get some items down.
Do we have something else though scheduled for before our next meeting?
Um, possibly.
Depending on what happens.
Depends.
Yeah, so if not, this mean the following.
We will have a work session at likely every meeting until April at a minute. Maybe.
Can we also have?
I will send this out as well.
Yes.
It's nice to see them all laid out.
All the goals, yep. And I just was able to get that today and I apologize. Otherwise, I would've sent that out a lot earlier, but. So, any.
We're not allowed to.
So I love that.
These are, yeah, these are in no particular order.
I, I was happy to see there was some overlap. Not necessarily exactly, but there's definitely like a, a strong.
So I need you to, if you, yeah, so what the follow up needs, also we'll put, send out the Excel file so you can make your adjustments. I'll make the adjustments to the top half so you'll see what they look like now. And then I'll say you can kinda put in the green and the yellows and then you can figure out. But I need you to close the meeting on the floor.
All right.
The net object needs to be.